Say ad luce.
Be turning. My baby on?
Are you fine, you coming in?
Okay, being at seven o'clock, it's just had the meeting September 15th, 2015. Budget leaders.
One of the best states of America. Which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah.
So many people that sit here, chew it, that's gross.
No, no.
Actually, this is an appropriate meeting to have the fire department in swearing in. Some new firefighters and promoting one here, Maynard, because in the last week, Maynard lost one of its former firefighters in Ted Clancy passing away, I think on Tuesday, Wednesday of last week, so, I think they have a moment of silence for Mr. Clancy before we begin. So, chief.
You've sworn a new captain, Captain Timothy Gray. Do you want me to correspond?
Yes. Do you, Timothy Gray, solemnly swear to do your duty as captain for the Maynard Fire Department to the best of your ability to serve the citizens of the town of Maynard with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws and constitution of the United States of America, the state of Massachusetts, and the town of Maynard.
I will.
Congratulations. Do you want to have a picture? With your family?
Sure.
Can't bring that little, those outfits. I mean, come on. I know, with firemen, the fire truck jobs.
Love it.
Some people can't maintain sense of professionalism.
My cheese and cadence.
I heard that the other day.
Oh, you're looking.
Good job.
Okay, then we have our newest career firefighter, James here, he was sworn as a qualified firefighter, now he's a career firefighter. There are James McGowan and Derek Maskelenko.
Yes, so we have Matthew, Derek, and James. Congratulations and welcome, thank you for serving. Matthew James, Derek Maskelenko, James McGowan, do you solemnly swear to do your duty as firefighters for the Maynard Fire Department to the best of your ability to serve the citizens to the town of Maynard with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws and constitution of the United States of America, the state of Massachusetts, and the town of Maynard?
Adieu.
You are a good person. Then we'll have him sign, you can take pictures with him. Derek, you can sign. Matthew, you're here. Let me sign on your name.
All right.
Thank you. Congratulations again, James. You can sign right away.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony, do you want to close the constituency? Yeah. Oh my gosh.
This is a busy life.
I know.
Is she smiling?
Smile.
We got room.
Good.
I know.
Is everyone leaving?
I bring greetings and congratulations from the House of Representatives, and I would like to have it hereby known, the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Timothy Gray in recognition of your promotion and swearing in as captain for the town of Maynard Fire Department. Our entire membership extends its very best wishes and congratulations to you. And what I will do is I will read almost the same wording, and then I'll say both, all three of your names, and you can come up and receive your citations, so. Being hereby known to all, the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Derek Maskelenko on your appointment and swearing in as a new firefighter for the town of Maynard, as well as James McGowan and Matthew James. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses a hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Congratulations. Steve Malchuk.
Hey, thanks.
Look at her, very short.
Did you get it?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, is she back?
Tomorrow, she's back.
Yeah, I'll talk to her.
Yeah.
Are you pleased?
And there was one.
Two.
You guys didn't tell me how to stay.
Kate's staying?
Kate's staying, yeah.
She's coming back?
Yeah.
Oh.
She knows that, right?
Firefighters always come out in mass.
I thought you were going to retain the crowd.
Entertain?
No, retain.
Oh, whoa, 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 you guys want to hear Kate's story? Sit down. I think Kate ran out, she, where'd she go to get some more cookies?
Diesel brown.
That thing was big, I'll be up all night now.
I too.
They're all bosses here. Been about water reeds tonight, you know, it's time to go.
We go to comments before Kate?
Yeah.
We're expecting Kate Hogan to speak to us or address us tonight, but we'll skip to number three on the agenda, public comments, just because Kate is not here, and when Kate comes, we'll go back to her discussion. So any public comments before we get started with Kate Hogan? Okay, no public comments. Item number four, minutes. Motion to accept and approve the minutes of September 1st, 2015, as shown, a second.
Second.
Okay. Any comments about the minutes of September 1st, 2015?
No.
You have no comments? All those in favor accepting the minutes, as is? Five to zero. Okay, Kate?
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you. Great to be here, I will be brief, I know you have a long meeting. I wanted to give a brief update to let you know that the liquor licenses for Maynard are in the Senate. That means a lot of the work has already been done through the House, and we should be seeing some passage in the near future. I also want to let you know about the civil service bill, it's in third reading in the House. What we're doing right now is see if we can make it retroactive to the time that it was passed by the Board of Selectmen or at town meeting, so that we can apply it retroactively. We're in House counsel with that right now, and hoping we'll have any answer in the next few days.
Okay.
And then, if anybody had any questions?
Any questions for Kate? Comments?
Only comment, not about what we just talked about, but I'm encouraged that the space downstairs is back up and ready to go, so.
Oh, yes, and thank you so much, I'd like to thank the Selectmen, the Town Manager, everybody in Town Hall for being so welcoming, I think it's going to be great to be able to have an office here in town, so thank you so much.
Welcome.
I know you guys told me, what days is it going to be someone there?
Yes, we'll have people in the office on Mondays and Thursdays, from 10 to 3:00. And of course, there'll be people in otherwise, but that's, those are good times for walk-ins, that would be Monday and Thursday, from 10 to 3:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, any questions for Kate? Any concerns, comments?
Just want to just echo Selectman Donovan's comments, and just to reiterate, your staff that you have has been exceptional to deal with and work with, and we welcome having Jordan here on a regular basis, and some of the other folks. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five, correspondence items A through Q. Make a motion to accept and approve the list of correspondences as shown, that's A through Q. We have a second.
Second.
Any comments? I have one comment, Kevin, on number O, letter O, the internet essentials, is that something that the town is involved in, or does that go through the schools, or how does that one work, do you know?
Yeah, that's all part, that's part of the contract we have with the provider.
I guess the question is, it seems as though in the letter that we welcome the opportunity for you to help share information to the families and students in your community, so is that our responsibility, or we take any part of that, or just through Comcast advertising? How does that work?
Yeah, and public presentation notices that they provide.
Okay. That wasn't real clear. All right. And that's it, any other comments about the correspondence items? All those in favor of accepting A through Q? Okay. One item on the consent agenda tonight, appointment of a special police officer. Make a motion to approve the consent item as shown. Any comments?
Oh, second.
Any comments from anybody about that appointment? And just to remind everybody, the appointment is to hereby Ralph Arlenbeck as a Maynard Police Department, as a special officer, with a term expiring June 30th, 2016.
I assume he's not in the office.
No.
Okay. Chief told me he was here 10 years, he's been here 10 years.
A little over 10, yeah.
Okay, so, okay, all those in favor of the special appointment? Item number seven has been removed from the agenda, and the possibility is it will be rescheduled. Item number eight, there's a permit for common victorial license for Saracen properties. Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
What do we need to know? Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, can you introduce yourself?
Yeah, my name is Ashley Hansen, I'm the Director of Operations for Whole House Group, and we're operating the cafe space that's within Saracen's property at Clock Tower.
Chris, if I may, I understand why you need the common vic, are you guys operational right now?
Yeah, there was, we are operational.
And is there a concern that there hasn't been a common vic until now?
There was a little bit of confusion.
A reason why you're here?
Yes, there was a little confusion, it was a mistake that was made, so.
Okay.
It's been three days.
Okay.
Anyone else, any questions? How'd you call the name?
It's Amory Maynard actually built the mill, so we wanted to have a little nod to him.
Oh, nice. A little town history for you, too. You know you're getting a history lesson.
I found out it used to be a restaurant.
He was not here for any reason. Were you?
Were you here for Amory?
You might have caught the end of it.
Of course I was, come on.
So, there we go.
It was a trick question.
Oh, okay. We did our research.
Giving her an opportunity to actually say how she was thinking about the town history, you know?
We were, we, yes, we embrace it.
I need to have your coffee.
Okay.
All right.
All right, well, make a motion to move to accept and approve the request for common victorial license at Seven, Clock Tower Place, for Eight Maynard LLC, doing business as Amory Maynard's Cafe, a second.
Sure, second.
Need further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is the eight certain for that? What's the expiration date on that?
Expires December 31st, 2015.
Okay, so it's in the standard cycle, and does that start as of this vote?
Yes.
Or is it retroactive for two days?
Yeah, it's effective today. We're riding the ship, but it's essentially effective today, expires at the end of the calendar.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ash. Thank you for providing refreshments, by the way.
You go, thanks.
Thanks, Ash.
All right, we have to wait until 7:45 for the water hearing, so we're going to skip to item 10, which is ratification of the police chief's new contract. Make a motion to accept and approve the three-year contract for Chief Mark Dubois, a second.
Second.
Comments, Kevin?
Anything to add to this? Nope, it's just the successor contract for Chief Dubois, three-year term through the end of fiscal year, June 30, 18.
So, public certification, can you highlight the key points?
I can't. I don't have any.
You want it?
Yeah.
Read here.
Can you just, I don't want to stick back on that mic. As I said, it says effective for a term of September 30th to June 30th. It provides the details of the duties of the police chief, provides for, standardizes the, nothing changed in essence of, the only update on the duties we've more formalized in here than the prior contract was with regards to the animal control officer, and with regards to the Public Safety Dispatch Center that wasn't previously part of the duties as outlined in the contract. The compensation is identified in there with his coal increase in Quinville, with a coal increase at, I think it's just about 2%. The benefits is the same, it standardizes with any of our non-union contract employment with paid time off agreements. There was a slight increase to the chief's uniform allowance in fiscal year 17 and 18 by about $200 to account for the cost of increases in uniforms that he's had to bear, and it formally, more formally lines up with the line patrolmen and sergeants with what they get in their union contract agreement. That's about it.
One more comment, if I may, Mr. Chair. During our negotiations, if you want to refer to them as that way, in private, I had an opportunity to make my comments known to the board and to the administration, but I think now we have the opportunity to make my comments known to the public, and that is that I have the deepest respect for Chief Dubois, I'm extremely pleased with the performance that he has had throughout the term of his contract, and I'm excited to have him back, and I expressed also the fact that I think that the professionalism and the integrity and the, you know, not that there wasn't before, but the morality of the crew when you speak with them is really high, and I attribute a lot of that to the chief's leadership, and I very much appreciate his being with us, and I'm glad that he continues for another three years.
Any other comments?
Certainly second to what David said, very, very pleased that the chief has decided to stay and give us a chance to negotiate with him, so, and looking forward to continuing the partnership.
Okay. All right, so, all those in favor of accepting and approving the three-year contract for Chief Mark Dubois? Thank you, chief. Okay, item number 11, Kevin, do you want to give us the history of that little change?
Item number 11, so there's a slight change to the memo that was provided in the packet. I sent the board a revised memo from Town Planner Bill Nemser through email, as well as added it to the Dropbox folder for this evening, and the request, essentially the request is for a, to send back to the planning board, the request from Mill and Main, folks from Saracen, with a pre-application discussion, they have indicated that, and we've had conversations since the ownership has changed specifically with regards to some of the requirements in the zoning bylaw that deal with minimum square footage, so, request is to, essentially to accept this and refer this to the planning board for further hearings and discussion, and part of the mindset here is that it's also, is addressed in the development agreement, the same, any restrictions could be addressed in the development agreement as well as the zoning.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair? First off, I preface everything I say by comments, that clearly I'm in favor of what's going on at Mill and Main, and I'm looking forward to their progress moving forward, but relative to the development agreement, there is an effective development agreement in place as we speak with the prior owner of Mill and Main, that based on the language of that development agreement carried over to the current owner of Mill and Main, and inclusive, inclusive within that development agreement are the limitations that we are now asking the planning board to consider amending. So my question is, how does that impact the development agreement, because the development agreement holds the weight of the law, not the bylaw, because the development agreement is first in line, so I'm wondering if things aren't backwards in that the development agreement should be reflective rather than the zoning, and secondly, we can't do a development agreement until we know what they're planning on doing, so that we know what the impacts are for the project.
Yeah, so, you know we're up against timing, obviously, with town meeting, and the requests for the zoning with the January 11th and the planning board hearings, they're scheduled to come before the board on October 6th to discuss the development agreement.
Okay. Then the second thing is, this process that we're going through here to refer this downstairs to the planning board is something that is fairly new to us.
Right.
It was brought to our attention, I think, within the last year and a half or so, if not shorter period of time, because zoning ordinances are guided by Chapter 40A, Section 5 of the Mass General Law, and upon my review of Chapter 40A, Section 5, I see that in order to properly refer this to the planning board, the referring agency, in our instance, the Board of Selectmen, have to be presented with the actual zoning ordinance that's going to be presented to the planning board, so I don't think, I imagine that this is just letting us know that this is going to be coming. you speak with them is really high and I attribute a lot of that to the chief's leadership and, uh, I very much appreciate his, uh, his being with us and I'm glad that he continues for another three years.
Any other comments?
I'd certainly second what David said. Very, very pleased that the chief has decided to stay and give us a chance to negotiate with him, so, and, uh, looking forward to continuing the partnership.
Okay. All right, so, all those in favor of accepting and approving a three-year contract for Chief Thank you, chief. Okay, item number 11, Kevin, do you wanna give us the history of that little change? Item number 11, um, so there's a slight change to the, uh, memo that was provided in the packet. Um, I sent the board a revised memo from town planner, Bill Nemser, um, through email as well as added it to the Dropbox folder for this evening and, um, the request, we're going on the old, you know, um, essentially the request is for a, uh, to send back to the planning board, um, the, uh, request from Mill and Main, um, folks from Saracen, um, with a pre-application discussion, they have indicated that, um, and we've had conversations since the ownership has changed specifically with regards to some of the requirements in the zoning bylaw that deal with minimum square footage. Um, so, request is to, uh, essentially to accept this and refer this to the planning board for further hearings and discussion. And, um, part of the mindset here is that it's also, um, is addressed in the development agreement, the, uh, the same, um, and any restrictions could be addressed in the development agreement as well as the zoning.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair? Um, first off, I preface everything I say by, uh, comments that clearly I, I'm in, I'm in favor of what's going on at the, at Mill and Main and I'm looking forward to their, to their progress moving forward. Um, but relative to the development agreement, there is an effective development agreement in place as we speak with the prior owner of Mill and Main that, based on the language of that development agreement carried over to the current owner of Mill and Main. And inclusive, inclusive within that development agreement are the limitations that we are now asking the planning board to consider, um, amending. So my question is, how does that impact the development agreement? Cause the development agreement holds the weight of the law, not the, the, uh, the bylaw because the development agreement is, is first in line. So I'm wondering if things aren't backwards in that the development agreement should be reflective rather than the zoning. And secondly, we can't do a development agreement until we know what they're planning on doing so that we know what the impacts are for, uh, for the project.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so, you, you know, we're up against timing, obviously, with town meeting and the requests for the zoning with the January 11th and the planning board hearings. They're scheduled to come before the board on October 6th to discuss the development agreement.
Okay. Then the second thing is, um, this process that we're going through here to refer this downstairs to the planning board is something that is fairly new to us.
Right.
It was brought to our attention, I think, within the last year and a half or so, if not shorter period of time, um, because zoning ordinances are guided by Chapter 40A, Section 5 of the Mass General Law. And upon my review of Chapter 40A, Section 5, I see that in order to properly refer this to the planning board, the referring agency in our instance, the Board of Selectmen, have to be presented with the actual zoning ordinance that's going to be presented to the planning board. So I don't think, I, I imagine that this is just letting us know that this is gonna be coming and at a later date, we will get notified of the actual zoning ordinance, we will then give the approval, that this isn't a, uh, a, a vote for us or a, uh, an affirmation for us, for them to go ahead and begin the process of holding hearings, et cetera. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, other than the, the board doesn't approve, uh, a warrant article they accepted that's been submitted by the planning board, but yeah.
No, I get that.
Essentially, it would come back to be, to be put onto the warrant, um, and it would be come back before the board.
Yeah, the, the, um, the language that's in the statute, and this is what concerned me, and I just wanna make sure, the reason I'm bringing it up is cause I don't want somebody to complain about it down the road and derail the progress that might be getting made. Um, and what it says is that "The Board of Selectmen or City Council shall, within 14 days of receipt of such zoning ordinance or bylaw, submit it to the planning board for review." We have not tonight been submitted anything from the planning board other than a note from Bill Nemser saying that, the planner, saying that he intends to discuss this issue with the planning board. So in order to comply, and this, I think it might be something we have to run by council, but the way I review 40A, Section 5, is that we better make sure that we're not missing a step in referring the ordinance or the bylaw to them. So, you know, they can present, they can prepare it, they give it to us, say, this is what we wanna talk about, we then acknowledge it and send it down, we have nothing to do with the vote or whatever, just following the law the way that it appears to be written.
Right. And the board, the board could sponsor it itself as well?
Correct.
Do you have that option as well?
Yes.
And I think they have 65 days after that to respond, but we don't have, some communities have a more formal, um, process, like typically it's, it's a request letter that says, they wanna initiate this. We had this conversation, um, earlier this morning with, uh, Attorney Witten, um, in, in relation to that as well, um, just in passing, and he agreed with the process. Um, and it lines up with, uh, with similar projects. As you said, this is a fairly new thing we've been doing, actually started with the first 129 Acton Street application.
Yeah.
So I think we've only had maybe two projects that we've done it this way.
Right.
But yeah, that's, that's it.
Okay. That's all I wanted to bring to, with the attention so that we didn't miss the boat.
Right.
That's it, Chris.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
The memo talks about getting rid of the minimum sizes, but it's silent on the maximum sizes, which is part of the same language. Is the intent to keep the maximums?
I believe the intent is to keep the maximum. Yep, their concern is, um, that the tenant and the, they, so their concern with the way that it's currently written is we're basically advocating for a big box entity and the tenants that they're looking to put in there do not want 10,000 square feet of retail space. They're, they're more smaller boutique, um, friendly, uh, type of businesses that would, you know, be somewhere in the range of like 2,000 to 5,000 square feet. So they want that flexibility to be able to, um, write leases to those smaller folks. I haven't heard any, um, interest in larger than, than what's allowed.
They're currently allowing them on the 50,000.
Yeah.
You're saying they're gonna keep 50,000?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, there's no desire for larger than that on the retail. It's, it's, it's on the smaller end from the minimums that they're concerned about. All right, so no further comments? All those in favor of passing this to the, uh, planning board for review?
Just give me a second.
You second it? Uh, we get someone to second it?
I thought we didn't.
Is that we second it when we read it?
Tell me so.
And I guess.
Wanna formalize it, I'll second it and then you can vote on it.
I guess even for discussion purposes, is there a reason to send, to make a motion since you confirmed that we need to have the actual, uh, we need to have the actual ordinance in front of us before we refer anything to them?
Um.
So really, it's nothing, there's no vote that would be necessary, I would think. It's the first, uh, I don't know if you have the statute language in front of you or not, but it's the, uh, it's the first paragraph of Chapter 40, Section.
Yeah, I don't have it.
40A, Section 5.
Does the vote duty hinder it, doesn't it? It just pushes it forward regardless. We're still not binding ourselves to anything besides having the planning board take a look at this, correct?
Correct. Correct.
If it's listed on the agenda, why, I, I move we just vote on it and just, we understand the concern and it's, it's valid, but whether we vote on it or not is really, it's.
Yeah, I mean, the advice that we got from, um, special counsel was, it was exactly that, that the board, um, put vote to, uh, defer it, so.
Okay. All right.
So if that's the case, then I'll, then I'll act a second on that.
I'll reread it and go through it. Move to accept and refer the request to remove the zoning bylaws, the minimum square footage requirements for retail, restaurant and supermarket uses within the healthcare industrial district to the planning board for review in accordance with MGL Chapter 40A. A second.
Second.
Any comments now? All those in favor? Kevin, you wanna give us the, um, 129 Parker update? Will we wait? Yeah, sure. Brief. Um, so as you know, the last update was the, uh, the town, um, special counsel submitted a, uh, draft to the, um, developer applicants, um, council, and, uh, we just heard back from them, this was, uh, they've had it now for a few weeks, we heard back from them today. Um, we haven't, had been able to review their comments, but they provided comments, um, and we had a conversation with, uh, Attorney Witten this afternoon, we have a, another phone call, um, scheduled with him on Thursday to, uh, discuss, um, in more detail, the, uh, actual comments that have been made. They're fairly minimal, um, they've, uh, they've essentially, um, accepted a lot of the proposed, uh, changes that have been provided by the special counsel. There is a few comments that they had, um, as I said, well, I think though, ultimately the, uh, the proposed revisions were, uh, pretty close to recommending and, um, you know, we'll be close to bringing a draft for the Board of Selectmen, uh, to consider for proposed, um, potentially as soon as October 6th. Um, as I said, their comments, they weren't too, weren't too detailed and I don't think it would be too much for, uh, the attorneys to, uh, work out, and then Attorney Witten will have a, uh, proposal for the board, uh, to consider hopefully, um, October 6th at the latest, uh, the second meeting in October, but he's, he's hoping for, uh, our meeting on the 6th. Again, that was received by, um, by the town and, uh, special counsel today, so, um, there's not much more feedback there, but he's, he'll be preparing a draft for the board's consideration. And, uh, just a note on that, the 53G funds that were requested, um, for attorney fees, um, they've sent back a response letter to, to my letter, um, asking for some specifics which, uh, certainly seem reasonable. Um, we're preparing a response back to that, as soon as they receive that, they'll cut a check. Um, specifically, they're asking for, uh, what the town's agreed rate is, um, for special counsel and assuring that it's consistent with, uh, rates, uh, for similar type of projects and, um, also, uh, detailed, somewhat of a scope of services of what we retained, uh, Attorney Witten for. And, um, they've asked requests for accounting of the, uh, 53G account that's already established and the leftover funds. Um, all of that, we should have out to them by tomorrow, so. Um, there is, as I've said before, there is a balance that's carried forward from the project for the last couple of years.
They have no problem with allowing that to continue?
Correct. Um, they've agreed to, once they get that stuff and have a chance to look over it, they'll cut a check for the 20,000. Um, their plan is to replenish it in $10,000 increments, um, and replenish it, uh, as soon as it gets down to five. Um, they would replenish it in $10,000 increments, uh, to the account, so. Um, as, right now, I think there's just under 7,000, um, somewhere six, high sixes, that's a remaining balance that the project already holds in the 53G. Um, so with, with, uh, receiving those funds, we'll, we'll have about 26,000 and some change. And, uh, also in the letter, they specifically, the request was for attorney fee, um, retainage and they agreed that anything else that's laid out in the development agreement for pay review requests, um, that obviously that they will fund that accordingly. That being, um, you know, any of the, uh, traffic engineering utility, anything else that we need as a separate funding. Okay. That's all. And that's, and that's in the, um, in response to the MOA changes, correct? The, uh, that's in response to the. Updates to that? What's that? Is that, is that in response to the updates to the MOA or am I, am I on the wrong document? Um, that there, we're going back and forth on the proposed, that, that's in response to the revisions to the, um, NBOD. Okay. To the zoning, um, revisions that, that are, um, requested. What, he was also, he was also discussing the MOA? Right. Yeah, this, um, this is kinda tied into. So where's that piece? That piece is still, they're gonna, yeah. All the same, so it's both at once? Um, well, they, they're doing the zoning and then they'll, they'll update the, uh, MOA accordingly. All right. They're reviewing all that, what those impacts, uh, would look like. The only thing left that's gonna take less than two minutes is to adjourn, so we might as well wait, right? Yeah. Probably with this one.
Not much in here, Courtney.
Oh, I got a bunch of stuff, I got some stuff.
Now we have to sign it.
The chief's contract has, we have to sign it.
The chief's contract signed?
No.
I haven't signed it yet.
I got, I got, I got.
Tim was proofreading it.
Did you sign it in two places each?
He'll be here tomorrow. He'll be here tomorrow.
Yeah.
Come in.
One second, just.
rates, fiscal year 2016, and I will read the legal notice as required. The Maynard Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 15th, 2015, at 7:45 PM in room 201 of the Maynard Town Building. For the purposes of amending the town water use bylaws specifically, water and sewer rates, the public is invited to attend for the Maynard Board of Selectmen. Give us a second. Kevin? Um, yeah, so I've provided a, uh, recommendation, uh, for the board's consideration, the review of, um, the current, um, rate recommendations and the recommendation from our, um, consultant engineering firm, Wooded and Corrin, um, with regards to, uh, increase of the, the rate. Um, yeah, I think overall, um, the, you know, the reserves are healthy, um, where things are coming in, uh, as retained earnings, uh, we're in fairly good shape. We closed out fiscal year 15, um, to the positive with some earnings, we were wondering where the, at the time of this initial letter, we were wondering where that revenue would stand, um, and it, it came out to, to work out pretty good, um, which, you know, I think is, is healthy. Um, I don't think that the retained earnings are excessive, I think it's based on the way the town of Maynard has budgeted over the years. Um, we typically depend on those retained earnings to deal with capital projects that come through and capital needs, um, as opposed to some of, some of other, um, funds which are, uh, built into the, uh, the budget. We don't have a very, um, lengthy maintenance operation piece, uh, built in there, particularly on the sewer. Um, you know, we're dealing with a very aging infrastructure. Um, we're lucky, fortunate enough to have the wastewater treatment plant, which we're paying for, um, but the, uh, sewer lines, uh, themselves, we're seeing significant repairs have been popping up and there's, uh, there's a need for, um, for that capital investment and repairs. The other, um, other areas that are coming in with regards to, um, stormwater requirements, et cetera, um, I think that, that the recommendation, although, you know, it could probably be adjusted, um, to be lower, I think at this point, um, what we're really looking at is probably closer, if we go with the recommended rate increase, we're looking at what's gonna be probably closer to, you know, 7.5% since we've missed an entire quarter, um, of revenue that we're, that we, that we've missed out on being able to bill for, so, um, my recommendation to the board is to consider going with the, uh, recommended rate increase of the, uh, Wooded and Corrin Toby Fetter report. Okay, any comments from the board? Any more comments? Tim?
I'm not right now.
Terrence?
I don't have any comments, no.
Jason?
Yeah, Kevin, um, can you tell me what the retained earnings in water and sewer stand at?
I can, yeah. Give me one second.
That's fine.
I have those figures, um, very handy.
Wasn't sure if we had them in the packet that you provided or not.
It was sent to the board, I think, the last one, um, with the, uh, free cash certified that we just received within the last two weeks. There it is, thank you. So the, uh, water retained earnings certified, um, was 358, 181, 358,000, 181, and the sewer retained earnings was 193, 483, 193,000.
And, and what do we have in stabilization?
Um-
Because that, that's, that's the new, that was the new retained earnings-
That's correct.
-that we just certified.
That's correct.
Curious what we have in the-
Well, his, in the, in Toby's report, it's in there, on the fifth, second page of his actual report. He's got it listed as water, 451, 279, and wastewater, 766, 599. Are those accurate?
Um, this would have been done in April, I think we did do. So, I have it here, it's, um, water is 453,606,75, and the sewer is 770,553,21. Ending balance, so it's roughly the same. I mean, obviously, there's some interest and some other stuff that, that we pick up. And we did, this, we did do a, quite a bit of, in annual, at the special, of the special town meeting in May, funded several projects, some capital improvement projects with regards to sewer lines, there's some vehicle equipment purchases, those types of things which came out of the prior-
Correct, which came out of the prior year's retained earnings, rather than going into the stabilization fund.
Exactly.
So, so do those numbers-
Yeah, that's what, that was done originally.
Include, include the recently certified cash?
The ones I just read is, is the, no, no.
You add those two together, so the water would be 453 plus 358, almost a million bucks.
If we would-
Seven hundred bucks.
If we would not spend any and put it all in stabilization, yeah, correct. But the sewer is 193, and we're sitting on 125, 130,000 dollar project as we speak, as an emergency repair at Florida Road.
Okay, so that's 125.
Yeah.
The most recent project that looked at 10% plus or minus of our sewer collection system came in at 680,000 dollars a year and a half ago.
Correct.
So escalate that by 3%. So, I mean, there's your, there's your entire-
Right. Some of that might have been looking at inclusive of the Florida Road numbers, but the immediate, the immediate one that we're dealing with right now, and there's also some potential ones coming up at the other bridge as well. But that, that's a, an immediate repair need that we're, that we've actually received a D C A M waiver on to, to get it done.
Okay. Yeah, my point is just that you're looking at, we looked at 10% of the system-
Yeah.
-and we spent a million dollars. We spent the million dollars, not just a million, we spent the million that we have saved, assuming we don't need anything else.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of always been the caution, right? I mean, the, you know, 700,000 or so, it seems like there's a lot, but when you're dealing with water and sewer projects, they're expensive. Every little project that, you know, we, you know, we do a, the Mockingbird Lane lift station, you know, for instance, and that was about a half a million dollars.
That was, yeah, 450 and change, I think.
That alone, okay, we gotta do ongoing updates and repairs at lift stations, I mean, there's just, it's expensive, water and sewer is expensive to maintain and operate.
Okay, anybody, David?
Um, yeah, I, you know, my, my general feeling on this is that I think 10.2% increase of sewer rates is way beyond what is reasonable for what we're dealing with. To, to place basically a 10.2% increase on people is just, you know, in my opinion, is just not appropriate. I assume that when we have these repair jobs that we'll have to do, they're not all gonna be done in one year, there's going to be a drawn out process with a plan, which I haven't seen, that will establish the plan for going forward, where the repairs will be, that hopefully it's not all gonna be emergency repairs, so we'll do them within a reasonable amount of time, and we'll have a plan that's established with a payment plan, and we're not gonna pay it all at once, we'll, we could, I don't know if the, you know, because I haven't heard what the plan would be for, for paying for it, other than just use retained earnings, if there is bonding issues or anything else that could possibly be done on long-term projects. If we've got a project that's gotta go throughout town, it's not gonna be done in one year, that's for sure, so trying to raise the funds for, for one year doesn't make much sense. So I think we have to also consider other approaches that we haven't ever talked about, such as changing some of these block structures, maybe reducing, for example, block one, zero through 500 for water and whatever, as other approaches to try to get, rather than impacting people with a 10.2% increase, so.
On the sewer side.
On the sewer side. Well, we could do it on the water side, too, if we ever wanted to.
Well, I was just saying, the sewer side doesn't have the tiers.
Uh, yes.
What you're referencing.
We never had any type of, you know, we really haven't had any discussion, we had Toby in, you know, twice to, to talk about it, and I don't think he gave us many of the answers that we asked him. I don't, it, it doesn't make sense to me also that we don't include estimated potential uses, we don't include estimated increased fees that are gonna come from projects that we know are on the, on the line, none of those are being discussed in this, in this outline. And there is substantial amount coming from 129 Parker Street in fees. And where those fall, I don't know, but sewer hookup fees presumably a million dollars or close to it, hasn't even been discussed, yet we're putting the burden onto the, onto the rate payer, and I don't think it's fair.
Well, I think that was discussed, to be fair, that was specifically asked, and the issue with that is, I mean, you can't set the rate based on some unknown, you know, or some anticipated project that could be or could not be coming in the future. The, you know, the budget is set, so we need to fund the budget. Yeah, that revenue, it will be great when it comes, and I'd love to get more water users and, and, you know, bill payers, but at this point, we don't have that. And with the budget increased, you know, as you recall, we put the, you know, 100,000 dollars in maintenance and into, into the lines, was added into the budget. There's a increase to the wastewater treatment plant that's contractual, that has, you know, that has those increases. We've gone five or six years without any increase, which in some regards, you know, it's good, but in some regards, you know, it's probably not healthy for the fund as a whole. So we're kind of making up for that, and, you know, I totally agree with you that 10% is nowhere near where I would want to be seeing either. And I think, I think the way to do that would be to, you know, understand that the costs are, or operational costs are gonna go up until we see bigger revenue generators and providers. I'm hopeful, as you said, you know, 129 Parker Street will come online, certainly the brewery's gonna be a big water user. Hopefully, that revenue will help be able to defray these water sewer rate costs in the future, but we don't have those today, and we have a budget to fund.
Public comments, any public comments about the water and sewer rates proposal? Ron?
Well, I guess I have a question, or maybe it's a comment. It's supposed to be a hearing, so the normally hearings that I read were just waiting, there's some information, so there's a conversation going on, it's a nice conversation between Kevin and you folks. I don't know what any of the numbers are, I don't know what the revenue is, I don't know what expense increases are being talked about, so it's difficult to ask an analogy question, and so we think there would be some standouts or dispelate or something, if it is a hearing.
Yeah, that's fair, and to be fair, we're also into mid-September, and the town approved the budget for this in May. Typically, this is done prior to, to that, you know, when we, when we do our rate setting. So the budget numbers were presented, the budget numbers were known and adopted at town meeting, so at that, at that point.
So then let me ask you another, please, I got a secondary question in place. Good. For water and sewer, what is the expected revenue number that will result from whatever the rate increases are you proposing?
Mike, do you have that? Yeah, I think I have it as a hard copy.
Well, Mike goes to get that. Anybody else have any other comments in regards to water and sewer, well, Michael's chasing the information, yes, Bill?
The revenue number in the warrant, is that the number?
Um, yeah, no, it's to meet, I mean, it's essentially to meet the demands of, of the expenses. So, if, if the revenue, I think, yeah, it's, it's pretty close to the, to that, you have that warrant figure for the enterprise fund, would you, yeah?
The revenue number in the warrant, from the town reading for Article 7, which is sewer, is 2 million-
Right.
742,000 and 200,000. The revenue number in our plate, which is water, is 1,526,167. So somehow, we knew all this analysis and these rate increases, at that time, we're confused about how.
So, yeah, so we, what we, no, I think that's, that's the number. So what happens is, we do up, we do have a budget, we sit down, we do have a budget, there's indirect costs that increase that are offset, that come out of that, that dealing with, you know, obviously, we, we hit a 10% health insurance increase this year, so every single town employee that is, that's paid for and funded out of those enterprise funds, that indirect cost number goes up. So the indirect cost on the expense side is coming out. As I said, the wastewater treatment plant, Violia contract went up close to, I think, another 3%, you know, so those expenses, what we do is, we do the budget, go through the budget process, and we present the budget to our consultant engineer, and then they determine based on what our budget is, what the revenue needs to be. So it's not, the revenue isn't done first, it's the, you know, in the sense of the, the budget, I mean, the way, you know, to make it, to make it work and what we think, and we cut, to be fair, we cut some of it. Chris asked for a lot more than what I gave in the budget, you know, like any-
I don't think I'm a challenge, anyway.
No, no, sure.
What I'm, you know, just what I'm trying to get at is, the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, establishes, an enterprise fund says that the revenue budget is established by assent of the executive, of the legislative branch. So when town reading sets, accepts the article, that's the revenue.
Correct.
So now I've been hearing a lot of discussion that I don't understand about rates and moving things around, so I'm trying to find out if that changes the revenue number that you need another town reading to do. If it's this number that was approved by town reading, then I don't-
It is that number.
Then I don't have any more questions at all.
No.
I guess I asked the roundabout-
Yeah, no, it is that number.
Correct.
The expense, as I said, the revenue is determined based on that, that's what's put forward for adoption. Now, the increase in, you know, at the end of the year, is things like one-time fees that, that come in and other enterprise fund, unanticipated stuff that we end up with retained earnings. You might have an employee that left in the position, went vacant for three months, you know, where we saved on a salary, for instance. All of that accounts to the end-of-year closeout, and obviously, we want to have enough revenue predicted to cover our expenses, so we're not going back at the end of the year, or mid-year to ask for additional rate increases by doing that, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, um, Bill Cranchon, Mockingbird Lake. Um, best I can tell, this discussion is about changing the rates for the bills that are gonna come out in a couple weeks, which I believe covers usage in the past few months. So my common question is about whether it's fair to do retroactive rates.
I think it would, it would be effective October 1.
For the future use or the bill that comes out at that?
Future use.
Future use, so the next bill will be the old rates.
Yes.
And this will be future, okay, now that's good. Then I have one other-
Because it would be behind one quarter, in essence.
Yeah, I have one other comment. I concur that the water rates need to go up, in part because we got a little more honest about O and M on water and sewer, and got those numbers in the budget. I'm not really sure what the number should be, because I never really saw the rate, is that a backup for that, you know, maybe it's five, maybe it's 10, whatever. My suggestion is that you are gonna change the rates for sewer, that you actually break it up into two rates, and leave the 1 to 500 as is, and change the rate for anything above 500, and that way you won't have a future growth and impact in the cost for the senior discount. Why don't you just keep increasing the senior discount?
You're talking on the water tier.
No, I'm talking the sewer, bust the sewer into a 1 to 500, keep it at 888, and then 500 plus, whatever your increase you need, do it on that. Because the original senior discount, you know, was supposed to be like 150 bucks, and because it's always just routinely been increased on these rate things, it's gone to 250.
Right.
But this way, you can just hold it at 250 from now on, and it'll never grow again.
Yeah, I think that would help, I don't know if that makes sense.
Seemingly, there would need to be some analysis on that num, on those numbers as to the impact on revenue and bills, and what, you know, to accommodate a percentage increase. I'm certainly not in any position to analyze that now.
I mean, you can see what it's gonna do qualitatively. You're now taking more sewer funds out of the picture, which means the folks left paying it are gonna pay more than 10%. The more we scrimp and save and pull away from one, it, it has to be made up, it's just like tax levy. If you don't pay, then I pay. If you don't pay and I don't pay, then Chris and Terrence have to pay. I appreciate Bill's comment, I think, I think to your recommendation letter, the senior discount needs to be reevaluated.
Yeah, I mean, my recommendation was to look at similar to, you know, other exemptions, which I think is common, from what I've seen, you know, similar to the vote of assessor exemptions, which are more, more need base. Because it doesn't, the, the current policy doesn't account for the well-
and change the rate for anything above 500. And that way, you won't have a future growth and impact in the cost for senior discount. Why should we just keep increasing the senior discount?
You're talking on the water tier.
No, I'm talking the sewer. Bust the sewer into a 1 to 500, keep it at 888. And then 500 plus, whatever your increase you need, do it on that. Because the original senior discount, you know, was supposed to be like 150 bucks. And because it's always just routinely been increased on these rate things, it's gone to 250.
Right.
But this way, you can just hold it at 250 from now on. It will never grow again.
Yeah, that would help, I think that makes sense.
Seemingly, there would need to be some analysis on that number, on those numbers as to the impact on revenue and bills and what, you know, to accommodate a percentage increase. I'm certainly not in any position to analyze that now.
I mean, you can see what it's going to do qualitatively. You're now taking more sewer funds out of the picture, which means the folks left paying it are going to pay more than 10%. The more we scrimp and save and pull away from one, it has to be made up. It's just like tax levy. If you don't pay, then I pay. If you don't pay and I don't pay, then Chris and Terrence have to pay. I appreciate Bill's comment. I think, I think to your recommendation letter, the senior discount needs to be reevaluated.
Yeah, I mean, my recommendation was to look at similar to, you know, other exemptions, which I think is common from what I've seen. You know, similar to the vote of assessor exemptions, which are more need-based. Because it doesn't, the current policy doesn't account for the well-off or wealthy senior that's 70 that, you know, has two homes and is getting a discount as opposed to the exemptions that are simply...
I would caution discussion on the...
On the assessor side.
On the senior discount, given that it's not posted on the warrant, on the agenda, and this is a rate hearing, not a discussion of the topic of the...
Well, it's certainly part of the rates.
Definitely ties to the rates.
Recommendation by the town measure.
Certainly part of the rates and was in, yeah, it's part of the rates.
Senior discount policy is not part of the rates.
Well, it affects the, it affects the rates in some respects.
It doesn't mean it's supposed to be a hearing on the water and sewer regulations.
Does not mean you cannot discuss the policy in terms of a rate hearing, right? I think everybody's discussing it right now, right?
By the way, you brought it up.
Well, I brought it up as a...
I understand. Right.
And the reason I think it's relevant, Chris, excuse me, is because it's actually on the recommendation sheet that we're all looking at here on the board. So I think it is extremely relevant to talk about it, whether or not it's being acted upon. It's a different story, right? But it's something that should figure into the overall conversation in my mind.
To Jason's point, if we, if we take from one spot and we need to get to number X, we have to add from somewhere else. And we have to, you know, it's going to make a difference. If you... To the point that, you know, someone was making it was interrupted, there are people that have multiple homes and have the means to pay any water and sewer rate. And whether or not they're elderly, or they're people with young kids, or they're people with kids in college, or whatever it may be. There are people in more dire straits than them and in more of a financial situation or crisis than some of our seniors, and they're not getting a discount. And now we're going to ask them to bear more of that burden? You know, I don't think that's fair either. When we go to start changing rates and moving boxes around and, you know, the other stuff insofar as the rates are concerned, blocks, it's all part of the same discussion. It doesn't mean we act on the senior rate tonight, but it's certainly something that should always be considered. Anything is open for consideration and for discussion. Doesn't mean it's part of the vote or part of the decision that we make. But there's certainly a number of people in town that are hurting just as bad as any seniors. And, you know, why?
I absolutely, I absolutely agree. And that's why a 10.2% increase on their rates is outrageous.
How long has it been since we have an increase?
Six years.
So we'd been increasing at one point 8% annually, half of the Consumer Price Index. We would, I mean, this is not the first time we've had this discussion with, with our failure to increase rates. We just had this conversation two months ago, three months ago with the ambulance.
This was the first real year that we, we looked at, on the expense side, increasing beyond just salary increases that are contractually required. Increasing the expense to maintain and operate for the last five or six years hasn't been done either.
Again, my point is just that, for some reason, and I've never been able to get my head around it, that the town of Maynard, as long as we have some money coming in, we don't seem to worry about the fact that costs are escalating. And I disagree with our consultant on that, who, in no full disclosure, I work with. I disagreed with that for six years. Came in and said, "Well, you know, you had a little extra in retained earnings, so you can cover, you can cover, you know, the little bit of an overage or the employee that we forgot to budget, or the maintenance that we didn't do." At the end of the day, somebody's going to get stuck with the bill. And now, as unpopular as it is, and I agree David, it's unpopular to say we want to have a 10.2% increase, that could have been a 7.5% increase if we had done this three months ago and we had the current bill on it.
Quick question, sorry actually for myself, pardon one second. Kevin, the unforeseen, you know, water main breaks we had last year, I think there was a big one on Brown Street, of course, and there was a couple others. How are we able to pay for those? And did we tap ourselves out with any emergency funds to actually pay for the work? It seemed like we were, I don't want to overexaggerate, but it really seemed like every couple of weeks we were having another one on winter time, right? There was an issue someplace.
Yeah. We, yeah, we went negative in some areas to account for that, you know. For those unforeseen repairs.
I know you can't really predict what's going to happen, but you still need to assess that. Okay. Pardon me, could I? I think you have a question for me?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick comment about some of the discussion that slipped out of the race about mental fairness and equity. You know, what you're saying is right, but there are a lot of inequitable things that happen in the town. So for example, you know, we're, we're doing a housing stock plan that says we need a whole lot of senior in affordable housing. But yet, you know, we don't think, we think that those same people can pay the same order rate as somebody else. But just think for a minute, and I'm not proposing there's any change here. Those same people that are getting this couple hundred dollar water reduction are paying two-thirds of their property taxes for schools. Fair is fair. They're subsidizing, there's, you know, in municipal environment other than things like trash or pay-for-use. You know, there's lots of subsidies going on for different people. So the average person in Maynard's paying $6,000 or $8,000. The property taxes, if they're 70, you know, $4,000 on it's for schools. And I don't think going to mine, I pay it, I had kids, I don't now. But when we start talking about if you don't pay it, somebody else will. It's happening all over the place in big numbers. And this is very small things. So what do we do for, if we want to keep elderly people in town? I think, what do we do? There's a little tax work program and there's this. There's really nothing else. So that doesn't mean you should keep it. I just think, you know, it's not like means fair to the people. There's a lot of big bills that the seniors face. You know, my social security, even the last three years, went up zero. Nothing, none of my pensions went up at all. So I'm not crying in my beer, but somebody else said, "Well, it only went up 200 bucks." I didn't get 200 bucks. So I got to go dip into my 401K. I have one. But after a period of time, I move. So that's the real question for me is, if you want to have a diverse town, you want to have a diverse town. You want to value all these things. We recognize, we just pay the consultant to tell us all the affordable housing we need, how short we are in element of the housing. Well, there are other ways to help that. I don't mean to make a speeze of the thinking.
No, point well taken. I think that, you know, everything you say is valid. One of the issues with schools is everybody went to them. So at some point or other, you benefited and I benefited and everybody else benefited from generations before them. Maybe not to the same degree, but everybody has benefited from other people's, you know, tax dollars paying for them to be in school, their children to be in school. That's just, that's just a cyclical thing that you can't stop. And it's a certainly adding...
To be fair, I mean, if they're homeowners, there's a direct, the school systems have a direct value on the, on the value of their home.
The rate payers have a seven-years-old have paid for capital improvements for the water and sewer system for the past year. So they've paid also. It isn't just we're paid to operate it. This, you know, our water and sewer system is worth probably $200 or $300 million if you replace what costed. So all these people here, either when it was a tax before the enterprise fund or now, they've paid that full bill and put this whole thing in place. So now we're talking about operating it. But all this just didn't show up. And a new person who's in the town and they pay to run it, they don't pay any fee for that. So they, so the people that have been here have paid.
What if the new person moves in at 70?
I think we get...
That's, that's a long argument. I think that... It's okay, there's a lot of long-winded people in the room. There's also a lot of people in the room that pay taxes. So, you know, any increase in taxes or any increase in water and sewer rates obviously leaves a sour taste in the mouths of everybody in the room, including the five of us. My, my opinion is that, you know, what are we getting charged with? We're getting charged with, you know, a 10.2% increase. Are we paying for somebody else's sins before us because it wasn't raised in six years? Kinda, you know? I mean, we'll take the brunt of the, the brunt of the complaints and I can, I can certainly shoulder that if someone wants to approach me and make that complaint. But at some point, we have to make the town whole and pay the bill. I don't know where the money's going to come from if we don't, if we don't raise the rates appropriately, whether or not they were raised in the past or not. You know, whether it's seniors or anyone else in town. It leaves a terrible taste in everyone's mouth. And, you know, you talk to people, they tell me, do all you can to lower taxes and lower water and sewer rates. But the fact is, if it has to change, it has to change. To David's point earlier, you know, it would be nice when 129 Park Street, when we finally get that project done and those people are paying, you know, hookup fees and they're paying those bills. Hopefully, we're able at that point to reduce these rates for the people that are still here and for the seniors that are here and everybody else. When the mill starts going and they start adding people to the mill and the brewery starts pumping out, you know, the numbers that I've heard of the amounts of water that takes to run one of those places is phenomenal. You know, that'll, that'll run these numbers up. So hopefully, there's something on the horizon in the way of relief that's not artificial, that we're going to artificially create. I have no problem helping any senior stay in town as long as they can, whether it's reducing water rates, taxes, or anything else. But at some point, all of us have to pay to make the system whole. And if, you know, we're paying people to study these things and to give us their opinions on these things, and they're the experts, and they work in conjunction with Kevin and Mike Guzzell and the rest of the town staff, and these are the numbers they come up with. I don't know how the five of us, with the exception of Jason, who has a background in water and sewer, I don't know how we ignore those recommendations.
And to that point, the selectman does have a background and he's recommending.
I'm well aware of that, that's all I'm saying.
I get concerned when I, when I asked the expert a month ago, "Are we in trouble?" And his response was, "No, we're not." And Kevin tonight says our reserves are healthy. He says the revenue was positive last year. So that's where, you know, I'm hearing the message that we don't have a problem.
He also said we went negative on repairing emergency repairs for water mains. It's, is it unlike, is it unlikely we're not going to have another major break this year? Of course we are. It's just a matter of time. So I mean, I think...
I mean, one project, we've already almost spent our entire retained earnings just on the Florida road repair. I mean, having reserves and having retained earnings, not exorbitant retained earnings or similar, similar, no different, you know, than a, than a free cash conversation. I mean, that is healthy. I mean, we shouldn't be squeaking by with just, you know, just making it.
Mr. Mike?
One, I mean, the one thing that you have to take into consideration with those, with the rate increases, is that unlike the general fund, you can have negative free cash in the town and operate, still operate. By law, you don't have that option with an enterprise fund. Right now, we have eaten based upon what's happened into the free cash. So if nothing else happens, two things are going to happen at the end of the year. You will end up having to, by law, you're going to have to cover the deficit. So that means you're going to have an increase of some sort to cover it. And number two, you have to take it out of stabilization in order to cover it. So there are no choices as far as any negative as of right now. You only have two options left at the end of the year. It's going to come out of one of two places. So regardless of whether we, what, what the increase is, you're going to have to increase it. And number two, we are basically, do not have built into that budget, water or sewer, any, you know, money that would be, could be set aside that would be for catastrophe or for capital ill用for. It's not built into it.
If I may, you were asked to go get a number, or you ran out to get a number. Did you get that?
Well, you already did.
Oh, he gave it to us? I missed it.
Yeah, that was the...
Regardless of what, I mean, Toby said the debt now, on the water side, the answer is definitely...
Oh, okay, okay.
And I would say on the sewer side, you're approaching probably as did the end of this year. You're not, you never, you will not have enough funds to cover expenses. You won't.
And 10.2% would give us a, a... We would have extra money at the end of the year, wouldn't we?
Right, we would probably have extra money.
So that's the point, and all I've heard is 10.2%.
Right, you probably, I don't know. I mean, that's assuming, you know, we don't have any more breaks or whatever it is. I mean, you know, and revenue does come in as we planned. If it doesn't, then it's a whole different story. But I think the point was well taken. You don't know what the future is. If all of a sudden you've got $1 million out of Parker or Miller or anything like that, you now have the option of doing what you're saying. You could actually decrease the wage.
Last year, last year, in fact, we overcharged for water in the amount of $358,000, didn't we?
But you overcharged.
Because we got, we have retained earnings at the end of the year, which means we have more than we need at the end of the year for...
That was accumulation of the year before too. We didn't take anything out, so it's a combination of two years.
How many years made up the 358?
Two years and a half. It was a carryover. Yeah, we didn't use any money from the previous year.
So then last, figuring in the average, $150,000, we overcharged people.
No, it couldn't mean, doesn't mean you overcharged. It means there are expenses, maybe that, you know, we had planned that would occur didn't occur. I mean, you know, you could have, whether it be salaries or anything. And I could give you a senior detail list of where...
Some of that, to be fair, some of that revenue came in, much like your free cash number, because across the street, paid their bill.
How much of that?
If we didn't have that, we probably wouldn't have had any. We probably would have just made the sewer.
How much of that came in from Cluck?
I don't have the exact amount. On the taxes, it was almost $1 million. They owed water and sewer res, do you know what it was?
Right, $1 million.
I mean, it was substantial.
So if you add, you look at water and sewer, yeah, that would probably would have covered, what are you talking about?
Oh, that would be, um... Property changed, ownership. But, I mean, just to that point, I don't think it's fair to say that it was overcharged. I mean, you'd be asking me today, "Why is the water sewer bill budget coming in negative if we didn't?" You know, it's much like the, the operating budget in the general fund. You have to budget your revenue conservatively. I mean, the last thing you want to end up with is, is a negative free cash like we had in 2009. It's similar to this. I mean, you're never going to break even.
I've made my point, and I think 10.2% is just too much of a burden.
Kevin's point, last year, just four bill that they owed us, $100,000.
It's the average water, it's the average water bill for a household.
It's between $7 and $22 and a quarter. That's just a, that's just a random sample of three different tiers. So 10%, yeah, I mean, when you break it down, the dollar amount, you know, there is a cost. I mean, there's an increase, but just on those three, it's anywhere from like $70 to $22 on a quarterly bill, depending on how much water, how much is used.
So the water and sewer, six, six years since an increase, right?
David, is that accurate?
I think it's, yeah. It might even be, might even be...
It's 2010 now.
It might even be, yeah, I think it might be seven years.
If you look at that sheet that I gave you with the tiers on it, it says, um...
10?
Seven, one, 2010.
I don't think we, I really didn't think we increased the rates then, but maybe we did.
So the structure was instituted in FY 11?
The, yeah, that was the structure that was, that was...
That was when we did that.
That was the external with contracting out through wooded and current in that year.
So you used cost of living at 3% during that time?
For where?
Over that period of time, you'd think.
Yeah, I mean, even if you look at the CPI, it's somewhere probably up to...
If you go and say six, six years, that's one and a half, that's one and a half. The cost of living, half the cost of living, it's either 9%. What does that get for a... What does 9% get us for a rate? What does a 9% increase give you for a rate?
It's what, 888 now?
What is it?
What is it now, 888? So...
888.
They're calculating, Mike.
This is 962, saves everybody 22 cents, 20 cents?
What do you got? 968.
968.
So 20 cents, yeah.
Kevin, you mentioned earlier, 7.5%, something that you thought would be a number. You threw that number out for some reason.
I threw that out there because we've, what I'm saying is that 10% rate for the budget, not for the individual, for the budget is only a 7.5% increase, thereabouts, because we've missed an entire quarter of billing. So for the individual using the next three, they're going to see that increase and, you know, they're...
Zero. Zero increase for your first quarter bill.
The recommendation of the 10.2% is based on if the rates were effective July 1. So we've missed an entire quarter. So it makes that amount that much more valuable that we increase the rates to be able to make up for the quarter of bills that weren't billed.
So what you're saying is, if I'm correct in understanding, David, sorry to interrupt you, is if it's a 10.2% rate and we've already skipped a quarter essentially, the net effect on the resident is actually about 7.5% is what you're saying, increase?
Yeah, I mean, they use...
I'm not moving to the number, I'm saying that's the logic you're using.
Exactly, but to the budget, I'm looking at it from the budget standpoint. From the budget, it's about a 7.5% effect on the revenue side when it was proposed at 10.2%. But for the individual, I get, you know, the argument could be that they use the water thinking it was at X rate, and now, you know, we're not going to backbill them, backcharge them. But effectively, now they'll know the new rate, and then they'll, you know, consume water as they will. But, yeah, to the budget, on the budget side, the budget's not going to see the full 10.2% because we've already missed a quarter of billing.
I don't think anyone in town really cares what the budget's going to see. They're going to care what they see.
That's right.
No, I agree. I agree with you. But it's a big number. It's a big number for a lot of people to swallow, and that's an issue. So, you know, I guess the question becomes, you know, that's the right number, or is it not the right number? And that's to us to decide, so. Anybody has any...
Do we have an option of not supporting the 10.2%?
Yes.
In submitting our own number?
We can submit any number we want.
Absolutely.
Okay. I might suggest that we, if we're talking about six years, the cost of living increase on average of 3%. And we're only paying, we're going to pay, only if we charge half of the increase, half of the, half of the cost of living increase over those years, you're looking at a 9% and that's a $22 savings, you know, 22, or 22 cents on the rate. What that amounts to for dollars for individual households, I don't know, but it's a savings. But it seems to be, it seems to me that would be a fair number if you're only going to increase it by half the cost of living. If you're looking at charging the cost of living, the true cost of living expense, which is what you build the budget on, you're talking about an 18%. You know, so you're cutting that in half. To me, that's a fair number, and it should be a workable number, given...
Talking of just, like I said, I mean, you know, it's fair. I mean, the budgets are a 10% increase just on Elf gear.
Yeah.
All those are costs that...
Well, to David's point, I think that, you know, you know, do you mind hedging your bet a little bit on the other side and hoping that you don't have the issue in being allowed to, you know, offer less of an increase? To me, that's, yeah, that's fair. We have, we do have some wiggle room within the dollars to save some money. And, you know, what is, what is 358% of the savings? And then what is, you know, what is, what is 3% when you look at, last year was 358, we had 358 already, and then 193? What, you know, what are those numbers? Is that, is that a fair number? Or do we, do we have two different rates? Is that rates different for water and sewer because we're going to need more in the sewer than the water? Yeah, do they have to be the same? Does it have to be one? Can it be a blended?
You're talking about increasing the water side?
No, but you're talking about, when you look at water and sewer, there's, the discussions are, you know, you increase one and there's one number.
Yeah.
Right? Well, what's to say, we can't say the water portion is X and the sewer portion is Y?
Because it's different. Well, you can, but it's totally separate. Like, the water expenses aren't the same. It's two separate enterprise funds. What's it, 60-40?
60 to sewer.
Yeah, it's about 60 to 40.
What's that?
Let me just tell you what each is.
The bills?
The bills, so isn't that what he just asked?
I don't know what he said.
You want to talk about figures on the bill?
Commission?
I don't think he sees those.
No. Because that's broken out that way, and you said you couldn't see that. No, yeah, yeah. Well, he's saying, they're two different funds. So by increasing the water, it doesn't affect, there's...
But they're not, they're not...
It doesn't help our sewer budget, is my point.
So all, your recommendation is about sewer anyways?
The recommendation was flat 0% increase on water to increase on the sewer.
So simply the sewer rates is what we're talking about anyways?
Correct.
We're not talking about the water rate?
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about in...
About both. From an increase perspective, no, but I mean, from your recommendation, right?
Yeah, correct, correct. I think the, I mean, the water budget and revenue is, you know, I think it will be in good shape with no increase. The sewer is the one that's, and if you directly look at it, that's the one where we're seeing repair needs. That's the one that has a contractual treatment plan operation increase. You know, there's factors that drive that up, too.
So essentially, you've only seen the bill increase theoretically on the sewer side of the house, not on the water and sewer, so...
Correct.
That's right.
So the overall impact of the bill is not as great as I think we originally think it was going to be, right? Still going to be substantial on the sewer side, but not an increase on the water side, right?
Correct.
That's correct.
So...
Yeah. That was just a random poll of kind of three tiers of where they'd be at. I think I know where, I think I know where some of that other one-time money came from. The Main Street connections. That was 140 grand.
McDonald's project?
Yeah. When did that come in? So that would have been closeout.
How many did he have there, do you know?
It was about 100.
Yeah. Have we gotten any? We haven't gotten hookup, I mean, I don't want to go through all the projects that are on the line, but Waltham Street's coming in. We know that that's coming in. That's eight...
So for these three bills, exactly, you're looking at an increase of...
Waltham Street? For the new project on the right-hand side?
Yeah, 51, yeah. 49, 61.
Oh, he did? Okay.
The other one was part of that, too, the two.
And then we've got the, I can assume that the Atkins Street project will come in 18 of them or whatever in 2016. So there's going to be, and we know there's going to be other development that's coming. And I think that we didn't even, that's not even being considered.
So if you did a 350?
Go ahead, Mike. Yep, rip me up.
One, no, no. Which is, I think, since I've been here, one of the biggest issues that really drives all the budgets is debt. You have a budget in sewer, 2.7 million. One-third of that is debt. On the same thing on the water side. I mean, on the general fund, it's the same thing, roughly, you know, you're talking debt. Now, yes, you may have extra money that's free cash or whatever you want to call it, retained earnings. But the whole idea of that is to do one couple of things, is that you don't use that to fund your budget, is to be able to have that money aside so you don't have to use your budget to pay for it, and you don't have to go out and borrow and use debt all the time. And that's one of the things we've strived in the last two years, is to be able to say, we no longer want to go out and borrow unless we have to. If it means building up those reserves so you don't have to do it, to me, that makes a whole lot of sense, and we've been very successful. A perfect example, we just had a $1.8 million that we thought that, you know, of additional expenses for the high school, and we thought, when it was all said and done, we'd probably have to borrow, long-term borrow, half of, half of that. Turns out, we're not borrowing one single dollar because we had, because we're doing things differently. To go out and borrow like we did in the past, we'd have gotten our management in trouble. One-third of your budget on both sides, that's a problem.
If I may, I just want to be educated on this. Is there any differentiation from the state's or the experts' opinions relative to the debt that we see on the general government side versus the debt that we see in the enterprise funds? Or are they combined and considered all one?
For the state, for what they're concerned, they combine everything, which is kind of crazy. But Maynard is compared to, let's say, other towns, whether it be enterprise or general funds, yes, we're extremely high. We are probably at least five, maybe, between, depends where you look at it, five to 10% higher, at least 5% higher than most municipalities. But the key is, what we're doing now is we're looking at how we do things and not using the budget in the way it's been doing before. Before, anytime you wanted to do something, you went out, okay, let's borrow it. Now we're saying, no, let's look at, let's have, build up the reserves. Let's not borrow the money unless we have to. You know, and if we have to, let's make it a lower amount. You know, why borrow 8 million if you can borrow 4 million? That's a big difference.
One thought is, what we could do is, we could establish a capital stabilization like we did on the general fund side. That's exactly what Mike, you know, to what Mike is saying. We know we're going to be building a fire station, right? So a couple of years ago, we established a capital stabilization account for any capital, but really, you know, the focus was the fire station. Well, now we're, we're at 2 million with what I'd like to do with some of the free cash. We could perceivedly have $3,000 in cash that we don't have to borrow, that we could, we can put towards the project. And it's similar on the...
3 million, maybe?
Yeah, 3 million. On the enterprise side, it's similar. I mean, we could, we could establish capital stabilization in there, in air market, as opposed to just stabilization. But it's the same, it's the same idea and same philosophy that we're funding capital projects with that money as opposed to borrowing.
And I think you had a good point earlier, is that, let's assume you have, next year, we get, let's say, next two years, you get a million dollars due to 129 Parker. No one says you have to take that million dollars and put it into a stabilization. You could turn around and say, okay, we have a million dollars. Let's use 300,000 of it to reduce the rate. You have, now have that option.
Understood, but I think the tendency will be, we've got projects coming, let's spend it.
But now, that's the tendency that's been in the past.
I understand.
My theory, since I've been here, is, no. You have to look at maybe what's going to be coming up, maybe the thing, but, you know, you don't spend it. The key is even on the general fund, is every year, as you said, the tendency is you have this money, let's use it...
I totally agree.
And my theory is, no, let's not do that.
I totally agree.
Let's now look forward and say, well, if you have new growth and we budget 300,000, let's use the rest of it, you know, to do what you're saying. But before, there was no plan. And I think now, we have, with Kevin here, we have now, everybody's in agreement, we now have to look at how we did things in the past and say, we can't do it that way. That no longer works with the town or mayor. And I think we've proven in the last two years, if we're going in the right direction.
I appreciate that, and I agree. So we've been at this for an hour, Mr. Chairman, and I'm wondering if there is any compromise number other than 9% that...
10.2%, right?
I don't know, I don't know, you know, if Mike and Kevin and the consultants are all pointing us in one direction, I don't know that, you know, if we go in a certain space or in a certain place and have a compromise number, does that compromise us in a town at some point down the road? It would seem to me that that's a larger risk. I can, I can, I can accept an increase, knowing that we also have the opportunity, if we do the right things and, you know, do the things that we've all talked about doing in, you know, progress in an economic development way and in a business, that we're going to have these other funds come to us through large projects and through things that we, you know, we have to keep in mind that we're, we do have the ability to decrease rates when we get to that point. And I think we have to keep in mind that we can do that. I think it's an unenviable position to be in, to cure the rates, the ills of someone else or other boards or other consultants that have not suggested a rate increase over time. But what else in your life does not get increased every year personally or municipally? It's just to hold this steady for six years seems to be, we're now being asked to correct it. And I don't know how we don't correct it, because if we don't correct it, we run the risk of being in a more difficult situation next year with having to borrow to pay for these things.
And again, my comment, I, you know, I'm not going to be in favor of a 10.2% increase, but the, I can understand, I've been, I understand that there's a need to increase somewhat. I don't think it's 10.2. I don't know what the number is, and I don't think we're prepared to say what the number is, because I don't think we have the data to suggest what that number is. So I can't support something where I don't understand what the heck we're voting to bring on. I don't think that there's enough data.
What data do you, would you like to see that would, you know, what information do you need? I mean, the budget, the budget's set. We have to cover the budget, and we have to pay for the budget. I mean, and these are the numbers that, you know, came back from Woodward and Curran based on the information that we gave them as a town and as, you know...
No, make the motion, Chris, because I think the majority of the board will support it.
Okay, okay. I'll make the motion. I'll make the unenviable motion. Move to accept and approve the current rates for water and increase the sewer, move to accept and approve the current rates for water and increase the sewer with a 10.2% rate for fiscal year 2016. Any seconds?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any comments before we vote? Yes?
Just verification of in-town and out-town rates. Applies in.
Correct.
All who's in favor? Or against? Four to one. All right, I guess we need to make a motion to close the hearing on the water and sewer rates.
So moved.
Second? In favor? Water and sewer rate hearing is closed, and we're back into the regular meeting.
You just voted.
Thanks, all. See you, Ron.
Thank you, guys. I know these hearings are hard, and I...
Thanks, Ron.
But I appreciate the work, the job.
Don't forget your hat.
I know you always have a hat on, so I saw you walking all out.
When's game one? Ron.
Ron, Ron.
When's game one?
For the champions.
Providence.
For an exhibition on the 3rd and 16th.
16th. I'll see you in one of them.
Okay, I'll be at home.
Okay.
See you.
That was a lot of fun. Not really.
I unfortunately don't have season tickets.
All right. Economic Development Update, please.
Okay, a couple, just a couple brief things there.
Okay, um, couple, just a couple of brief things there, the, as some of you attended, the town hosted the Downtown Business Property and Residents Meeting on September 10th. More than 20 non-town employees were in attendance, and we're able to introduce several current issues, including the rail trail, cultural district, complete streets, along with plans for increased code enforcement, the new rollout of the Business Environment Enhancement Program, or the BEEP, as it's been formerly known. Had a great opportunity for Mill and Main to, in a somewhat condensed timeframe, to be able to sort of present the big picture to Congresswoman Songus and Senator Eldridge and Representative Hogan. So, it was great to have them in attendance. And our intentions to improve parking downtown for all, and how each of these things are sort of all interrelated, and some of the conversations that I know some of the selectmen had, some of the staff had aside with Congresswoman Songus, and ongoing, continuous conversations we had with Rep. Hogan and Senator Eldridge. You know, it's, it's good for the, the other two to, to hear some of that. So, it was positive, and I thank the board that was able to make it out. I know it was convenient for work schedules, but it was important to have the, the representation there at the board level with folks like that that come into town, so it was good.
It was a hot day, by the way.
It was a very hot day.
It was warm.
Gallery 7 had a huge opening of their stereotypes at their display this weekend, and will be featured in the Boston Globe again and also Art New England Magazine. Anybody had a chance to see the Globe article that we're in, was featured already on, at the September 12th article in the Globe? If you've seen that, I have an electronic copy that I can share as well. So, it was great, good publicity for them, and congratulations to Gallery 7 for, you know, what they've been doing down there and the exposure that they're getting has, has been great. So, that's it, unfortunately, nothing else to necessarily report other than some of the conversations. We met with Henry and Jill from Saracen Properties to discuss their proposal somewhat, as I said earlier. They're hoping to come to the board on October 6th and meet with the board and discuss some of the development, development agreement changes that they'd like to see. And the biggest one that, that's glaring, the biggest two that I would say are glaring is the restriction on the bedroom types or unit types to one-bedroom for their project. As with others, we've seen, I think they're, they're advocating that in order for it to be successful, there would need to be a mix of some studio, one-bedroom and two-bedrooms to make it work. The one-bedroom in studios just isn't going to be enough for the project as a, as a mix use on the residential side. So, I know they want to discuss that, and they'd be looking at some variation of two-bedrooms, ones in studios, no three-bedrooms or dents. And the other piece is, as we discussed earlier, was the, the minimum square footage restriction that's been put in the development agreement, but it's also in the, in the NBOD code. And I know, sort of the thought behind that initially, you know, I think when this, when this was done, was that, you know, I didn't want competition or to compete with the downtown or, you know, put any of the existing downtown businesses in jeopardy by having smaller square footage establishments or retail. They're looking at it as, you know, they don't, they don't want to bring in large retail entities, and, you know, they, they want to provide retail opportunities that are going to supplement the existing downtown. And the way their project is being proposed, it will, it will feel much more like, like downtown, and they, they see themselves...
Excuse me one second, Kevin. You, you mentioned in that commentary, NBOD, and I don't think that you actually intended to.
Yeah.
Yeah, HCI.
Okay. I wanted to clarify, so that we can watch.
No, thank you. So, yeah, under the HCI, when the old property, Wellesley Management had it under the, when we redid the HCI zoning, I think in October 2011, that's when that was put in there. But they, they're looking at it and with their plan as their part of downtown, and they want to, they want to support the downtown and, and open themselves up as the other project proposal was, is much more kind of inward-looking, if you will, and more, it's more of like a campus as opposed to a part of the downtown. So, those will be the two big items, I think, that, that the board will see, that they'd like to discuss and, and have a discussion around for, for their project. Also be, I think, the first time that they've really had any discussion with the board with regards to housing. You know, we've, sort of, they've mentioned it, you know, we've known that they've kind of had a desire to do some housing on, you know, the Upper Sudbury, Lower Sudbury lot, somewhere around there, but they haven't shown that on any illustrations or anything like that as of yet. So, I don't think that's part of their initial project phase. They're looking at what they're calling, what they're calling 1A and 1. 1A is the bulk of the project, but it doesn't include any residential. 1A is really everything, from facade improvements, demolition, buildings coming down, pretty much everything but the, the boardwalk area type of stuff. So, that might be part of the tail end of that, the beginning of 1A, the beginning of 1 would be the residential component. So, again, that's, that's where that's at. And given the, you know, with the, it's somewhat time-sensitive for them on that piece because they're, they're not able to secure deals with, you know, with potential tenants that, on the retail side, that, that they might have lined up until there's a, you know, that change were to take effect. That's why the importance of getting it on to the warrant for January 11th and starting the process with the planning board so that they can make those changes with both the development agreement and with the zoning, so that they can effectively line up, after that, be able to line up new tenants for the project. Any questions? I don't know. Economic Development? It's all out for updates there.
How about your report?
The MEMA grant for the high-water table issue, we're still, that's the Hazard Mitigation Grant.
Act Street.
Hayes Street.
Hayes.
Hayes, yeah.
Hayes and Waltham.
Yeah, Waltham and Hayes, yeah. Haynes. The, for the Hazard Mitigation Grant, that's MEMA grant that's available. We've been meeting with Wayne Amico, Town Engineer, Linda Hansen, and Town Administration, with strategizing a grant application. The deadline is November 23rd. We've set an internal deadline of October 30th, so we can have our, our application and do some final vetting and, and meet the hard state deadline. So, we're hoping to get that. But coinciding with that, we're going to be sending out a second letter, updating residents that should be going out the end of this week, along with a request for input to help inform the grant applications and specific questions that will help, help solidify our application and, as we hear from feedback from, from the residents in that area. The STAN-TAC work that was done within, so within that, as a result of the camera work, et cetera, they've removed a significant roots and blockages, they've repaired portions of cracked pipes and will continue to, and they're now working east of Waltham Street, downstream from the most significant high-water issues, and so they're continuing to do some of that.
Kevin, if I may, we haven't had much rain, other than the other day. Has there been any reports from the neighbors about anything this year, including the gentleman that stopped in? Has there been any improvement?
No, we haven't heard. We haven't heard from any of them at all. That's why we're going to generate this second letter. When the first letter went out, we haven't had any, anybody reach back to us that's, that was interested in tying into the, tying in the sump pump or anything. There hasn't been any, any response really from the residents. Yeah. And some of that might be the, the early work that STAN-TAC did and the fact that we've had little rainfall, maybe that it's helping to some degree, you know, it could be possible as well. You know, if we've had a relatively dry time, and STAN-TAC has removed some significant blockages that were, not everything, but a significant amount of stuff that was identified when we cammed the line, so that might, that might have helped. But hopefully, you know, this second letter and reaching back out to them may stir up, you know, again, we're hoping they do, because we're looking to, to get some information to help us, inform us for, for the application, so. The phone update, Town Hall phone service is going much longer than we obviously would have liked or hoped and anticipated. We pushed back on our vendor, we were on the phone again with them this afternoon to push it. They are expecting to receive at the latest the parts, everything they need to the, to their location by Friday. Monday, the latest, barring any, any shipping issues. They tell us that, so they'll be on-site Tuesday, and we should be fully operational, hopefully by the end of the day Tuesday, but by Wednesday morning at the latest, so by, by mid-next week of the latest, we should have that all up. What we're doing now is internally looking at kind of the structure. It won't be seen externally, it won't, you know, it'll be seamless, but we're taking the opportunity to look at how things are built out with, we got crazy phone numbers and extensions on dialing internally, like if a, her number was 1375, it's 2275 internally. And it's just, I think it's just been the way the, the system was built, and now we have the opportunity with a new system, with a new programming, to, to write it, to, to build it the way we want to, to be able to expand departments, to, you know, be able to expand for, you know, there's some folks, for instance, that have a main number, is their direct number for like facilities, like Aaron's, Aaron's number is a facilities department number is 1308, but he doesn't have any direct dial extension or, you know, a direct dial number like every other employee. So, be an opportunity where we can build out, you know, we have reserved, there's, there's 100 numbers available, and, you know, we're currently using like 40 of them. So, the way, for instance, in Aaron's case, for instance, with facilities department, it could be 1308, but then Aaron could have a direct dial extension, Frey could have a direct dial extension, and whoever else may be in the facilities department at some times. So, we want to build it, and we're talking through a lot of that. I know these guys met, and not to exclude, Ann Camaro's been a big part of this as well. Ann's our Communication Supervisor of Public Safety and has been a great resource. She handles most of all that infrastructure on the police side, and her and Aaron have really been working closely, and, you know, so it's, it's disappointing, and I certainly sympathize and feel with, you know, residents dealing with the phone situation and everyone else. It's unfortunate that we've been, that we've come to this. We're hoping, as I said in the past, with redundancies that will be built here and that weren't previously, et cetera, that we won't ever be in this situation again, but it certainly has taken a lot longer than we anticipated and, and had hoped for, but I think some of that...
Is that the reason that the, the Dropbox thing didn't work?
No, that was a totally separate issue. That was actually a Verizon. It's, we're just one thing after another. That was a Verizon issue that was independent of, of the town. Our IT Director worked with Verizon, but it was, it was totally on their end to address. I think they got it back up by late afternoon, that it was back operational, the emails were down, internet was down, but it wasn't a, it wasn't tied to us, it was, it was a Verizon issue. But that did get resolved by the afternoon. So, that was separated, just another issue. But yeah, so hopefully, you know, as, unfortunately, you know, the salesmen tell you one thing and you stress and you urge the expedited process, and sometimes, I think, to some degree, I think they were ambitious in what they told us and they would receive it, and so we're delayed more than where we wanted to be, but we're told as of today, we should be up and running by, at least by Wednesday morning. That's the update on the phones. Internet and email still work, as do those four numbers that were provided and still are being utilized. Town Hall lobby improvements, obviously came in through that way, we've been continuing to work on those improvements. I think it'll provide a brighter, more comforting vestibule area for residents in a more modern feel to it, coinciding with the, the case. CPA was generous funding source for that, the historic artifacts case. It's being done the way it was originally designed, with the full glass piece as opposed to the doors that you've seen. If you've been in, in the building, you've seen renditions of it. It's now put back with those doors on the bottom off, they'll be replaced with glass, there'll be some lighting in there, et cetera, and we hope to get the, this week, probably by the next few days, it'll be wrapped up out there, and then we'll, we'll start to see artifacts, et cetera, going to that case as soon as they're back to, the glass pieces, the specialized glass pieces are getting cut in order to be put in. Veterans Memorial Park design, that RFQ, just a reminder for that, is due September 17th. So far, they've received 20 designers that have expressed interest. 10 of them have actually toured with Planner Bill, have actually toured the, the location, and we would expect that we'll see probably at least that, that will submit, so.
Kevin, excuse me one second. Are they, are they doing random tours with Bill? They, is Bill organizing a time where he's available for them to all come in together, or is he going out and doing 10 different tours with 10 different companies?
That's a good question. I don't know.
It's by appointment. I think the way that the bidding...
It was by appointment, yeah.
The tour of the site requires part of the bidding process, it's by appointment. Now, by appointment.
Yeah, which is uncommon. I mean, what's more common is you're given a, a date, and, you know, that's, that's when you do the walkthrough. You know, if you can make it, you can make it. Sometimes they make exceptions for others, but yeah, they typically, they'll advertise a bid walkthrough, and it's that date at that time. But I think, you know, I know this afternoon, he went with somebody, so he must be doing them by appointment, yeah.
Thank you.
Let's see, planning for, we're underway with planning for Veterans Day, the event to receive the American Legion Killed in Action photos, to be permanently installed in Town Hall, and certainly will keep that on the radar. Would like to have some selectmen involved with that, working with the Legion and, and putting together something for, for that event for down, for the lower level. If you recall, that's the donation of the Kill, Maynard Killed in Action photos and tying in with that, so. That'll be a good event, Veterans Day. I don't have specifics yet, but if you're interested, if you kind of block off that day.
Are you planning that for Veterans Day?
We don't know yet.
Because the building's closed.
Right. Yeah. I mean, we, we would advertise and, and open it up. But I think they, I think they ideally...
Got a key?
Yeah. I think they ideally wanted to try to do some sort of quickie type of thing on that day, only keeping with the spirit of Veterans Day and the fact that everybody's availability is going to be better.
Yep.
Obviously, you know, it wouldn't be during the parade time type of stuff, so, you know. Aaron is, so his managers meeting with the downtown wall mural folks, that's still on. I've reached out to, or several times now, or a few times, and they've, they haven't been able to make it happen on their end. But they're going to meet with Aaron, and there could be potentially some further delays as there're going to be some prep with the wall requiring additional treatment before they're actually ready to paint. But I've been trying to get them in the summertime, and I know, I think they had someone dealing with college stuff, and there was some other issues, so they don't, it just, the timing wasn't interested, convenient for those folks, but they are definitely still interested. We still have the funds that were encumbered, that, you know, so it'll happen this fiscal year. If you recall, the board approved those FY '15 funds. We encumbered those from '15, so it's there, it's just, it's a matter of getting the folks that have volunteered and willing to, to do the project for us, so, on board. So, Aaron's going to meet with them. Police and Fire softball game, I wasn't able to attend.
I was there.
I heard you were there. I think David came.
I showed up, I was late.
Representative Hogan was there, the, was attended by, you know, I guess dozens of community folks and enjoyed. Fire ended up winning in extra innings, 19 to 14. But yeah, it was, I had some photos, and it was good. Looked like a, looked like a good day.
Who was the umpire?
I don't know who the umpire was.
Wasn't Tim?
No, it wasn't Tim. I asked him if he was going to do it, by the way, and he said, no.
I think Ron, I think Ron... I think Ron, I think Ron Cassidy was the first base coach, right? He was supposed to come.
I know Sparky was there, the fire dog.
Sparky was there, yeah. I saw photos of him.
That was Chris. He didn't want to tell you.
So yeah, that was-
I wish I was there. Trust me.
Do you know how much money they raised, by the way?
I don't know what it is. Not sure. Goes into their coffers.
Boys and girls club, wasn't it?
Yeah, boys and girls.
It was the boys and girls club.
Right. That's what I mean. Yeah. Into their coffers.
They did have outstanding hamburgers, I will say that. That one I was there, it was very tasty.
Just one, huh?
Just one. I'm telling you.
Good. And yeah, everything held alright weather-wise and it was a good event.
Perfect day.
So, that's it. That's all.
My turn?
Yeah, just real quick. Andrew was planning to be with us this evening. He had a family issue to take care of emergency that he had to go leave for. So he, he bailed on us about five o'clock. Got to check and see how he's doing.
Hope all is well.
Okay. So, because you didn't mention it, we, we signed the community compact on September 10th with Lieutenant Governor Polito in the towns of Acton, Barksborough, Littleton, and Westford. And I guess Littleton and Westford had a lot of press and pictures and really advertising in their local papers as far as after-
Yeah, Littleton definitely did.
Quite a few, quite a few articles.
There was a, there was a piece that, so what happens is when they do those releases, they release them to all the outlets and like the wicked locals will pick them all up. So they ran, I had a press release on our end ready to go, which I still may do. It has a little more of a main and focus reiteration. It's in draft form, but they, so they printed one that Littleton released. They printed it in the Beacon on last Thursday, this past Thursday's paper. I don't know if you've seen it.
Yeah. Picture with you. Chris, Chris is in a couple of pictures.
Yeah.
You're in a picture.
Yep. So then Kevin, Kevin, Kevin and the woman from Westford and a couple others.
Yes.
It's a, it's actually a nationally recognized program. They're going to receive an award in Seattle at the National Municipal Conference.
Yes, International City County Managers Association.
So that's a, a good thing for the town. Did you fail to mention?
No, we knew about that. He told us a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, no, you're right. I did forget the compact. I was focused on downtown.
The other thing, so just so Jason and, and Tim know that on Labor Day weekend, some people had called David and asked about a, having a, a kind of a last minute concert on the Memorial Park and take advantage of the nice weather that was expected and the fact that the staging was up. And I guess they needed the board's approval. And so David approved, obviously. He called me and I was, happened to be with Terrence. And so that was the three of us. We all had, thought it was a great idea. And so they held the concert. And that's why I didn't bother you guys with the call about the, the concert. Kevin was also aware and the police chief and everyone, they were made aware. So I guess on Sunday, Labor Day weekend, they had a concert at Memorial Park. I just wanted you guys to know that. That's why you guys didn't hear about it up until, you know, ahead of time.
If I may, Chris, the, as you know, but still the Evers and people here, and the, the guys who did the concert were very, very appreciative of, of the town. They sent us thank you notes. And as well as the fact that the, the people who showed up, it was a very, you know, it was just a relaxing day where beautiful weather. And now there's talk about possibly seeing if they can start making it an annual thing with band, you know, band concert at the Memorial, Veterans, Labor Day weekend at, especially if that-
It's like a running thing. A run, annual.
Annual thing, yeah.
Hey, maybe we'll have a new hatch shell. You never know.
Yeah, sure.
Actually, to your point, actually, I ran into Mike Candela at the soccer game, high school girl soccer game in West Boylston. And he actually said it was, he, they really enjoyed themselves and they had a great time doing it.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah. They were very, very appreciative. They really couldn't believe it.
Well, I think it was, it was a good thing to be able to kind of do something out of the ordinary, outside of this room, you know, with the formality and just get something done quick. And, you know, that was the right thing to get done at, at that time. And it just was a, it was a good thing that it went down that way. I felt anyways that it was a, you know, a real positive thing that we were able to get it done for a group that had an interest on a, on a Saturday and get it, get it so it could be something that the people in town could enjoy.
Kevin was responsive. You were responsive. It was great. Thank you.
Okay. So now, water and sewer abatement meeting. We were supposed to have that, I think Thursday, but I, I had a conflict, so we rescheduled that. It's-
Tuesday.
Going to be Tuesday with Chris, Kevin and I. Chris Okafor, Kevin and myself to discuss-
And Marie's going to join us too.
Who? Yeah, Marie?
Marie's going to join us too.
Okay. We're going to, we're actually going to discuss the abatements we had in hand in the last packet-
Yeah.
From the week of the first and kind of go through them one at a time and kind of get a, hopefully I'll get a feel for what, you know, how each one was decided on and in the language, in the responses. Because I was, as we talked about last week, I was kind of concerned about some inconsistencies in the responses to the people who requested the abatements. And it didn't make sense that some were approved and others weren't for the similar issues. But, so we'll get that on the 22nd and-
We'll have it on the agenda for the sixth.
Agenda for the following agenda. But I will get back to you guys all with, you know, what I found out about them individually. And then we'll, you know, we'll have it on our agenda to discuss. And then the last issue for me was, we talked about at the last meeting, parking. Kenny had come in and asked about a, I don't know, a, a special spot for takeout in a special place. Whether or not he ends up with that is, you know, immaterial to the discussion. But David gave us a policy from 2008. I had Becky and Andrew, I asked them to research the, the minutes and stuff and everything to find out when that policy went into effect. And from what they could find from the minutes of 2008, the policy was never voted on. And there was a discussion about some sort of parking issues on a, on a given date. But the policy that we had in hand was not actually ever voted into, at least according to the minutes that we could find, was not voted as an official town policy. That being said, given all of the changes and everything else that are coming up, that we're aware of in parking, insofar as the loss of parking spaces that's imminent with the, the rail trail and, and those type of things, I think that I'd like to set up a parking committee of at least, you know, two members of the board to work with Andrew and the folks that he chooses from his committee based on the downtown, you know, the business folks downtown who he's been working with to kind of walk through the parking and actually create an, a, for us, a comprehensive parking policy to include, I think the term in that, that policy was red, red meters. I've never seen a red meter in town, but they were specifically mentioned in the policy that David gave us last time, several times. And I've, I've never seen a red meter. And I'm assuming a red meter means one that's only used for a certain amount of time or something.
Special spots, yeah.
Yeah. So I think, I think given that we couldn't find it in the meetings, and unless someone has meetings that, you know, a couple of the meetings that show that, we should probably develop such a thing going forward, especially with the parking restrictions and difficulties that we're sure to see in the next coming years, next couple of years with the, with the bike, bike thing, rail trail. So if there's anybody that would like to be part of that committee-
I would, I would certainly volunteer to be a part of that committee.
If nobody else wants to join, I'll, I'll do it. But Jason or Tim, if you want to do it, feel free.
Okay.
So that means there's three of you, which means you have, we have to post those meetings through Becky, right?
Yeah, I can do them as a subcommittee.
As a subcommittee, okay. So parking subcommittee.
I, I don't need to belong. I was just-
No, it's fine. I'm just, I'm just looking to see who's interested. That's, that's okay. Posting it is no big deal. It's just, you know, you know, around here, you got to give everyone a couple of weeks to show up anyway. So plenty of time to post. And that, that's really, the other thing is, insofar as the water and sewer rates, I appreciate the discussion tonight. I'm glad we, you know, I'm, I'm not glad about what the rate ended up being. I think it's the rate they had to be. But, you know, it's, it's the, the honest and the candid discussion is, is greatly appreciated by me and probably most people watching. So I understand that it's not going to be a popular decision. And I, and I think that, you know, we'll probably all individually answer some questions about it or take some criticism for it. But I think it'll end up, you know, it's, it was the right thing for us to do, in my opinion. And we'll see where it goes. But I just want to thank you guys for the open and candid discussion that we were able to have. And that's it for me. And so I'll go on to board member reports and start with Jason for a change. Stand on the left.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to take a second to thank Andrew and Bill Nemzer for the great job on the meeting with the business community. Zerrison at the library last Thursday. It was a-
I missed that one. I, I missed that. Did we post that one? Was that like something we got?
Yeah, you got an invitation.
I wish I didn't miss it.
I started off the fact too. I don't know if we-
I brought it up in the TA report, last meeting.
It came up. I, I had to hunt around for that invite, but I did find it. And unfortunately, I couldn't attend the walk around downtown.
Yep.
With our, some of our representatives and senators. So I-
I mean, it was well, it was well attended.
Very well attended. And I've already heard a lot of folks who were there and not there are already very excited about Bill's BEAP program. And I think everybody's readying their pens for applications. Furthermore on that, Bill Nemzer and I attended the 495 partnership meeting today, which actually had the head of DEP. And, you know, our water and sewer rate, it was a good primer for our water and sewer rate discussion tonight where, so a lot of discussion now about all the negotiations between the Commonwealth and EPA about how things are going to be rolled out and what they're going to expect you to do and-
For MS4 stuff.
For MS4.
I think the partnership's been doing a lot of lobbying.
Yeah. MMA has done a pretty good job on, I think, our behalf to, to bring our concerns and the concerns of all the communities forward to DEP. And DEP could then carry those forward to EPA.
Because it just, just not, that's solely for region one, correct?
Only for Massachusetts.
But EPA is solely for Massachusetts?
Yeah, because they're talking, a lot of what, a lot of what went on, a lot of those negotiations are for delegating authority from EPA to the DEP.
No, no, right. But the MS4 requirements that EPA is putting in is just coming out of region one. It's not coming out of national. It's not coming out of DC. It's a region one initiative, from what I understand.
Yeah, I'd have to check. I think it's, it could be the regional. It's, I can't think of his name at the moment.
I think that's where it's coming from.
But we did have that meeting. We got, I was able to introduce Bill to some folks who can certainly help walk both him and the town into some grant programs and, and help us out on some things like that. Also, some good folks to know at DEP for, in the new municipal outreach office. We were able to meet those folks and they were very happy to, you know, we have issues to reach out to them and they can, they can help us work through things.
Is that out of Boston or is that regional?
That's out of Austin.
So there's not a WUSDA liaison?
Not at the meeting. Not to say there wouldn't be, but-
Good to know. I mean, because they, the staffing levels have been-
They lost 109 employees to early retirement.
Yeah.
So, so that was a big point of discussion with all these new initiatives and things for them to keep track of. How were they going to do that?
They're in DOR.
That's, that's a big question. Uh, one more real quick. Community, the community chess pie contest was also held on Saturday. I know they made some, some good money despite the weather being a little off. There was a pretty good line for folks who were willing to shell out some money to try some pie. So it was down at the farmer's market.
Who were you?
Well, I hit there before the softball game. It was not me. I had a-
So you had pie then a hamper.
I can't, exactly. I actually skipped the pie.
I couldn't go up for that contest.
I went for the pie when they made the softball.
Who won the pie eating contest? Do we know?
Uh, it was the baking. I don't know who it was, but I know community chess ended up clearing some, some pretty good money. And they did a real nice job. Too bad it couldn't have been a big, nice, bright sunny day with, you know, without, I think, the start of the kids soccer season and football and everything else that kind of drew people away from what's usually a pretty busy time. But I know they still made out pretty well and they did a nice job. And Chris, just to, to your point about the content of park, I'm okay with that. I think it's a great use of the, great use of a town space. And, and I'm just disappointed I didn't hear about it until now. I'd have gone.
It was a-
Invitation only. Don't let them give you-
No, it was a cover band. A cover band. Very good, very good, all maiden guys.
David and a couple of his friends, but I was in a good mood. Somebody said, ah, what the heck?
They're about-
That's not true.
About 100 people there.
Thank you.
It was good. When does the, when, just before we go to David, when, when does the farmer's market, are they done now?
They will go through, are they going through Oktoberfest?
Yeah.
Or, I'm sorry, Maynard Fest?
Yeah.
Usually it's one or the other. I couldn't remember.
No, it's, it's later.
First weekend of October.
Down the street for that last.
It's later in October.
Oh, yeah. Actually, I'm sorry. They do. They will, they will usually set up, not, not verbatim, but that usually will set up down in front of CVS for that last week to David's point.
They do, yeah.
David comments?
Uh, yeah. First off, to Chris's comment earlier, I apologize that we couldn't find. I think one of the things we've learned is that back in '08, our record keeping and our minutes were not the greatest. And I apologize that they weren't, that we weren't able to get those documented. But my recollection from the time is that indeed there was a policy, I agree, that we need to revisit it. And, you know, it was, it was in, those spaces that we have, as we discussed, were implemented as a result of that discussion. But, so again, I apologize. It was just, obviously the minutes were not up to date. At least it appears that way. Secondly, Kevin, any idea on what's happening with the Coolidge School status at this point? Is there, is there some ongoing outreach for roof repairs or something?
Yeah.
Aaron?
Yeah, Aaron's here. Might as well have him speak to it.
Yeah, Aaron, can you fill us in?
We've awarded the roof repair contract to DP Carney. We have a reconstruction meeting scheduled for Friday at 8:00 AM with the project manager. And then looking to move forward. The timeframe will be probably the end of October to start construction and to finish it hopefully by the end of October, not first, but hopefully some November. But right now, we'll have some more defined timelines after I meet him on Friday.
Right.
Uses of the building right now, the food pantry continues to be used in the basement. Even, I got a quick question. The Boys and Girls Club Director, Wendy, asking to have some, some storage space. So we'd allow them to use one of their classrooms for summer equipment storage for their, lack of storage space that exists in the building that they have down in, on the corner across from our alumni field. Some of their storage and equipment in one of the classrooms.
And given, given the fact we've had a pretty dry summer, is, the indications are we're, we haven't had any additional type of damage or anything like that?
The damage, it's, it's been, you know, a couple of years worth of damage accumulated. The ceiling's still collapsing in on the second floor. No, no additional damage, but it's continued to be saturated and whatnot. And after rainstorms, there is some significant water in the barrels that are on the ground. So I guess, no additional damage, but-
But we're anxious to get the work done.
Get repairs.
Yeah. Thank you. Good segue to my second question. Kevin, can you give the straight story on the quote unquote roof collapse that was reported by Fox News? Any information that you have so that you can clear the, make it clear to the public and to the press as to what actually happened there?
So the press release that I had, John Guilfoyle, our press officer, prepare and release to all media outlets, went, went out at 9:00 AM on Friday, this past Friday, which was after the report, midway of the report of Fox 25 News, which was the only media outlet that was reporting on it. The fire police responded late Friday, late Thursday evening to some water leak call that a resident had made. They went and inspected it and spent some time looking at it. The acting fire chief at the time, who's also the town electrical inspector, had investigated and looked at it, called, contacted the building commissioner. And they agreed that it was nothing imminent. Structurally, it looked okay, et cetera. They had put in agreement that the building commissioner would come out Friday morning, which he did. The building commissioner met the fire department on site. They again further evaluated the building, determined that there was no structural issues with the roof or ceiling, that- with the roof or ceiling, that it simply was a, what had happened was the contractor, who was a licensed contractor, who held a permit that was issued by the town to do roof repairs, given the heat wave the first couple of days, prior to that, there was a heat wave, the guys had started roof repair work and had left the scene because they didn't want to be working in the heat. It was a misjudgment, obviously, on the contractor's end. The roof was not secured, tightened. We had significant water that came Thursday into Thursday evening, resulting in water getting in and damaging some ceiling tiles in the roof, but structurally, which is, which is, which is not how it was reported by the media, was that there was structural damage and that the residents were let back in and that simply is not the case. It was, it was no worse than what we saw over the winter with ice dams and significant, you know, water damage that other households faced over this past winter. It's unfortunate, obviously, and, but there was no, you know, no imminent threat to the residents there because it wasn't, you know, structurally it was sound. Following that, the health agent and the building commissioner drafted a number of code issues that they had identified just because they inspected the entire property and have since issued those to the property owner. So my understanding is they're making the repairs now, insurance has been involved and they're getting it resolved. But the way the media was presenting the situation, their report changed after 9:00 AM versus what it was on the early morning hours, once that release was sent out.
In effect, when Fox News was broadcasting out to the public that we are the only news station on site, the real reason possibly that could be true is because most news stations don't cover roof leaks.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, I think some of that was, you know, residents had reported incident, they wanted an immediate response. It came out and it was one side of the story, so.
Yep, good. I just wanted you to be able to clarify so that.
So the report that was released officially by the town and by the fire chief and the acting chief Morrison at the time is the reality of what happened up there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tim?
Oh, he skipped him.
Got to be ready when he's called.
Mayor athletics is in full swing. Congratulations to the football team on their first win. Field hockey today, one as well, congratulations. CPC seems to have a quorum tomorrow, so I'm interested in what's going on with them and what the next steps are. And that recreation hasn't met in several months and we need that, those positions filled. Hopefully, the public will step up once again and we'll have a committee. That's all I got.
Mr. Donovan?
Just a quick, there's a small incident today in Town Hall with the resident who came in and Kevin and I touched base about this a little earlier, so I think, especially in lieu of unpopular decisions sometimes that the board has to make, the Town Hall bears the brunt of some of the decisions, as you are the face to the public, you know, as we hide in our homes. I would like to see something done about an alerting system, up to date as we talked about, so, so that the church of collectives office and the town clerk's office aren't receiving the brunt of agitated residents because of the first ones through the door. It's the expectation that they should be somebody besides an Aaron or Bill or Fred or anybody else that's not a professional security person respond or some sort of call if there is need. So whether it's a bell or some sort of alerting system that thinks of the police station, we're lucky to have it right next door, I think it's something that we should really think about, making sure it's online. That's really it.
Yeah, no, so that, just to add to that, that's absolutely fair. The town installed panic buttons in all the, those offices that are sort of first line offices, you know, and we'll look at it. I don't want to say too much publicly, you know, as to the situation, but the police notifications are, will be handled.
And we can talk afterwards if you guys have questions about what it is. I'm sure Kevin will have a share.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I can go over the current system and, you know, where we need to be.
That's it. It's Tim.
That's it. I'm commotion to adjourn this meeting.
Second?
All in favor? Five to zero, the meeting is adjourned. That line thirty.